Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Davis.
Here.
Sheldes.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alright. We're going to go into closed session. This portion of the regular meeting of the city council will be closed pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 13D, point 05, subdivision 3C, to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the city's purchase or sale of real property and/or to determine the asking price for real property to be sold by the city. The council will not be asked to take any formal action after concluding the discussions in closed session. The following real properties will be discussed in the closed session. Parcel number 95-921-5690. I need a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next business is the city hall update from Bruce. Morning and good afternoon, or good evening Bruce. I'll work through the day.
I'm presenting up here tonight.
Yep. They do have printouts. Does anybody need a printout? We have extras. Here if anybody wants a printout.
Leslie, are you going to present?
Yeah, I guess you can plug in there too. Jonah can help you out. Awesome.
I want to start with the end in mind. Let me get this to the beginning. Sorry for that. That doesn't look great. Well, I guess I'm going to have to zoom into this a little bit. Can you? I'm not the technology savvy guy. So where do we go to like full screen mode? Not in PowerPoint, it's a PDF. Are you going to have to help me? Oh, full screen? I did presentation, maybe that was on. It's a little too large. Zoom in or out? Well, good evening. Thank you for the time to allow us to get this together. So, we've gone back and based on some comments from the last workshop we had with all of you, we've looked at the four options that were put on the table. And those four options were... Oops. Page down, let's see what happens. There we go. So, first option and diagrams are really diagrammatic in a lot of ways. They represent the proper scale of the proportion. So the first option we looked at, that we talked about last time, was remodeling of the auditorium. So you can see in the diagram up on the screen, the idea is to reuse and repurpose the existing auditorium. There's enough area in that building that you could add another floor in there, and that's what the cost estimate we put together was the idea of adding another second floor in there, along with all the other things that need to be done. So that's the auditorium. And you can see on the south side of the auditorium, what we're proposing is that once the auditorium is converted for city hall operations, that then the city hall would be demolished, providing parking for city hall on the south side, as we show in that diagram. The next option was really, and from what the feedback we got last time, was the option of building a city hall only on block 50. So, right now, we're showing the city hall component kind of on that west side and the kind of the northwest corner of block 50 in that area. And part of the reason we showed it there is it gives you more flexibility in the future to do anything else you want. It could be anywhere on the site. It's basically, we're showing a proportion. Now, in all these diagrams, we're showing in essence a two-story building. So, we've gone through and we've modified, I should back up a little bit. So we did modify the program a little bit. We had about 12 parking spaces for city vehicles in enclosed area. Well, that, unless you were to build a garage on the side of the auditorium, there's no space for that. So we're assuming in all these options, that the 12 city vehicles would be parked outside. They could be parked in stalls that are designated for city vehicles, but they'd be parked outside. We also, so what, by taking those 12 vehicles out of the program, I want to say, I want to say we were right around 31,000 square feet. I'm doing this from memory because I don't have it in front of me, which backed some of it out. But in talking to Leslie, we've also added some office space for economic development and chambers and another group in here as well. So we're right around 26,000 square feet for the city hall as it is right now. So right now, all these diagrams again, show two stories. Some of the concerns we heard about block 50 last time was the need for parking. Not only parking for the library, but parking for the church and things like that. So, this does respect that and maintains the parking for those other adjacencies. Option three then, was another discussion, which was the idea of, well, what if we, city owns the auditorium site, what if we demolish the auditorium and build the city hall on that site? And again, you can see the foot, the building gets a little longer, it could grow towards the auditor, or towards the city hall a little bit. But what we did in this diagram was, was with the idea that city officers would stay where they currently are, allowing to build this new facility before you had to tear down the existing city hall. So similar to reuse of the auditorium, it's on that same section of city-owned land, but it's really demolishing the auditorium and building a city hall there. The fourth option that was discussed, that kind of came back on the table, was, well, we've looked at Robins Island a number of times, what if we do the city hall and the community center together as a facility out at the site where the existing community center, senior center is now? And so we went back to this diagram. And this, there's some site modifications that we made to this. We moved the community garden further to the south, just to make the parking a little more contiguous and close to the building. But this opportunity and this option shows the idea of building a new, the city hall is primarily the two-story component, the community center would primarily be one-story, is the way that this massing of this footprint sits. Now, again, it's a massing diagram. When you get into the final design, it could change. We're showing the idea of some additional gardening and parkway and landscaping on the east side. Things could change. You could provide more parking over there if you wanted to. There's lots of things that can be done with this. But we did respect the idea of keeping the community garden as part of this, as part of the community center. If anybody has any questions as I'm going through this, please, please feel free to let me know. We talked about the pros and cons a little bit, and really, this is more for your discussion. We tried to vet them out internally, the ones that we felt made sense, and there might be more that you all have, but again, these are the ones that kind of came to our mind. When you're looking at remodeling the auditorium, the pro was, you're reusing an existing city-owned building. The cons, well, it will require coordination with the state historic preservation office. We talked about that some at the last workshop. I mentioned that there's a, that there's a, there's a, I don't know, a more stringent approach that the historic society can take on some of these buildings, and then it's working with them to find out what's the best solution for the facility. There are, it's on the national register, so there are some things that have to be complied with to reuse the building. It's working with them. It's not that it can't be done, but there's some additional work and effort that has to be put in, working with the historic society to make sure we get there. It does require extensive remodeling. The, the front part or the west side of that building, which is like the three-story piece, is pretty heavy concrete construction elements, and that's where we're thinking, the elevator, the bathroom, some of these things. For remodeling, that's fairly extensive. To build a second floor in there, you can't really rely on the structure of the existing building. While it's sturdy and stout and will stand for a while, or for quite a while, you can't suddenly put it, induce a new load onto those walls and onto those footings. So, it requires putting new foundation, new structure in. But again, we reviewed it with our structural engineer. It's feasible, it just takes some additional work. So, there's some extensive remodeling, plus needs to be re-roofed. I think it was back in the 2016 study that was done, it identified a number of things that need to be done as well, and those really would be accommodated if you were to remodel as well. One-street, one-site parking is not available until the city hall would be demolished, but I don't think that's the end of the world, but it's just one of the cons. The other option that we showed, city hall on block 50, again, it's city-owned land. It's a new build, which provides more opportunity and flexibility for where spaces go, how it's configured, how it looks. It's not refined by an existing building, and then there's ample area around that for on-site parking. So, it does provide a good, a good portion for that. As far as cons, it's, it's use, it's ownership, it's repair of the existing auditorium. We put the auditorium in there as a comment, as a side note, because at some point in time, the city is going to have to deal with some option for the auditorium. So, we just noted it that in this option, block, the auditorium still remains, and that still has to be addressed in some way, or some way or some fashion eventually. The pros and cons for the city hall on the auditorium site, again, the pro seemed to be it's, it's land owned by the city. The cons, it will require increased work, more than the other one. When you tear down a historic building, there's an extensive amount of work that needs to go into documenting the building, somehow reflecting that building on the site with a monument plaque or some other information. So there's a lot of procedures that if you were to try to tear down a historic building, which can be done, it's a lot of work to it. Now, again, sometimes it's a bigger question of, do you want to tear down a historic building, or would you rather keep that for some other purpose or some other use? But it, it can be done, it has been done in other situations, it's extensive. The, the new building configuration is limited by the existing footprint site. It's, unless you were to somehow tear down city hall at the same time and relocate city staff, that would give you more flexibility. But if you're working within the confines of the footprint of the auditorium, it's a little, it's a little restrictive. Demolishing a historic building I mentioned, which sometimes is not favorable, and on-site parking is not available until the end of the project, which again, is not just a footnote, really a footnote more than anything else. For the new city hall and the community center site, the pros were, again, you're reusing existing land you own. The new build provides you lots of external opportunity for whatever you need on the site, and you should provide, it should have ample, ample parking at the end of the day. The cons, it does require, the way you would do it is you would, the other options don't show anything for the community center. So, it, whether it's a con or a pro in this option is really somewhat up to you at the end of the day, because it does address the community center, and if that's the appropriate place and everything works out, it, this is the only option that incorporates the cost of the community center, but it also addresses it. So, whether it's a con or a pro, I guess that's, that depends on how you feel about it. It does require phased construction, so you would, you would build the community center first, demolish, or the majority of the community center, demolish the existing community center, then build the city hall component. So you're never putting, I think there were some concerns from some of the public meetings in the past, that if you were to build there for the two years, or year and a half, or whatever the construction duration is, that there wouldn't be the community center available for folks. Well, by phasing it and by building the new one first, it allows that to be maintained. You're not having a lapse where people don't have that amenity. So, does require phased construction. The, again, the auditorium is still there, but the auditorium is really a separate discussion to some extent. At the end of the day, it's determining what makes the most sense for that. And I think when we were talking to some developers and things previously, there might be an opportunity to even sell that building, but that's, that's another discussion to be had, I think. Now, this is going to be really hard to read, so I will try to zoom in on this. See if this helps me. Yes, much better. Okay. So the first option that we talked about, option one, which was remodeling the auditorium, we, we went through extensive analysis of the existing building, some data that had previously been done, cost of a variety of items, and, and this is really the same cost that we showed before. I think it did go up a little bit because the demolition of the existing city hall wasn't the amount needed to be adjusted based on the city hall cost. So all of the items that are listed there for option one, subtotal is about 15.4 million to about 18.9. Design contingency, again, for the unknowns, and then for during construction, we recommend during construction always about 5% is retained for the unknowns and things that are, that need to be addressed that might not be caught, is about another 2 to, 2.3 to 2.8. So your total construction for repurposing the auditorium for a city hall is about 17.7 to about 21.7. And again, in this, in a study, in a study phase like we've been in, you're always going to estimate kind of this high-low until you finalize more detail about the project. The next level, if the city moves ahead with a project, first level would be to go into schematic design, which would finalize the exact cost and get it out of the range discussion more in exact cost. So estimated construction for that is about the 17.7 to 21.7. On top of that, you'll have soft costs, which consist of furniture, A&E fees, architectural and engineering fees, testing, on a number of other things that are involved. And a lot of times, we put that at about 15% or so, and that's probably around where this should be. So that's about 3.1, 3.9. So the total project cost for converting the auditorium into the city hall would be about, almost 21 million, about 25.6. Option two, which is building a new city hall on block 50, the cost for the new city hall building is about 10.3 to about 11.2. There's site development work and utilities and foundation and getting the building kind of prepped, the site prepped for it. And we're also including in this resurfacing that parking lot. We're not assuming a full strip and redo, we're assuming a resurfacing of that lot. So the subtotal is about 11.7 to about, almost 13 million. Again, designing constructions contingency about 1.1 and about 1.3, puts the estimated total construction cost about 12.8 to 14.2. Again, soft cost in that, about 2.3 to 2.5, bringing the total estimated project cost between about 15.2 roughly and, and 16.8. So that's for the new city hall on block 50. The option of converting or tearing down, I should say, the auditorium and building on, at the auditorium site, again, you can see the cost of building city halls is comparable because you're still building that new building. The additional cost on that site primarily is tearing down that existing auditorium, tearing down the city hall, and then the associated site development with that. So, subtotal is about 12.8 roughly and about 14.3, design contingencies. So anyway, about 14 million to about 15.8 for construction, total project cost about 16.5 to about 18.6. That's the cost to build on the auditorium site. The cost to do the community center and city hall, so the new community center, so when we previously came in front of you and talked about the community center, we talked about a building that was roughly 28,000 square feet, I think was the number we had previously. In talking to, the current building that we scaled is about 17,000 square feet. What we talked about, and we would look back and forth at the program, we didn't, and we said, you know what? The reality is another 5,000 square feet would probably address some of the needs adequately. The wood shop and some of these other things needed more space and could be addressed. So we, we reduced the 28 million, or 28,000 square feet we previously showed and showed it at 22,000. So again, reducing it to a number that seemed appropriate for the numbers we've been reviewing as far as area usage. So, that did come down some. So the city, the community, the community centerpiece is roughly about this eight to $9 million number. Again, the city hall is basically the same, it's the same area, so the same square footage costs, there's appropriate for that. We have a cost for demolishing the existing metal building, which it probably could be salvaged and used, recycled to some extent. I'm sure there's some fabricator that would come and take most of it down. And then there's site development for that, for moving things and site work and moving the community garden. So with design and contingency and all that, we're looking at about a 22.5 million to about a 25, or 24.9 million dollar construction budget. Again, you add the soft cost into that, and you're about a 25.8 to a 28.6 million dollar project. Again, the main difference between this and the other three that we talked about is the fact that this does address the community center while, where the others don't. Questions, thoughts? The last slide we had in the presentation was provided by Baker Tilly. And Baker Tilly basically took the four options we showed, and they took the high side of the estimates. They didn't take the low, they didn't take the mean, they took the high side of the estimates. We'd hope as we get into the project, that we could find some savings, and maybe it's less than some of the high side we showed, but they took the high numbers to be conservative. And what you see is you go down the, down the column, so option one, you know, and Leslie, you probably could talk to this more, but they had the construction costs, they had the reserves from the city for the project, cost of insurance, underwriters, and so on and so forth. And then they had the payment, I think this was based on a 29-year? Was it 20? 30? So he has 29, but these are actually based on?
He does have a 29 in there on this spreadsheet, but.
Okay. So you can see, he's, he's, it's either 29 or somewhere in there for the term of the bond. The interest rate he's, he's assuming at this point, and you really don't know until you lock in, is about 4%. The annual payment is about, you know, the 1.4 for option one, 900,000, 939,000 for option two, 1,050,000 for option three, 1,519,000 for option four. There's some existing debbie let, debt levy in there as well for 550,000, and he noted to show what the net debt levy would be. And then down below, he showed really what the tax impacts would be, the various properties. Now, in looking, in looking through the average home for a Wilmer area, it seemed to be about $250,000 from what we saw. So if you compare the average home, option one is about $115,000 in additional taxes per year. Option two, which is on the, the city hall built on block 50, is $49 even more a year. Option three, which is tearing down the auditorium, is $63 a year. And option four, which is the community center and city hall to an average home, is about $122 per year. And you can all see the other, the other breakdowns as they go for the other values of property, as well as commercial property. So that's what we have for mayor, council, that's what we have for you tonight.
I don't, I don't mean to oversimplify.
I'm sorry?
I don't mean to oversimplify, but it sure seems to me that option two and three are our best, best choices. That's my read on it.
If you're, if you're, mayor, if you're basing it strictly on the, on the cost, clearly those are the lower ones. Option, option three, my biggest concern is the tearing down of historic building and that, and the effort to go through that. The only, the only reason to really look at, you know, the thing that I keep thinking about with option four is, you know, at some point, you're going to have to address something with that building. This addresses that and gets that off the table. So.
Audrey?
Yep, I'm here for whatever questions you all have.
Audrey's.
Who's first?
Go ahead, Audrey.
Okay. I have a couple different questions as we were going through this. If we were to look at option four, and we have the chance to maybe have some tenants in that building, space-wise, we'd have to make adjustments for that location? And then the, the second question that I had, I'll let you answer that and then I'll...
I'm sorry. So none of the options, other than the three entities we talked about, which was, which was the chamber, economic development, and who was the other one, Leslie? I seem to be forgetting the third.
Convention Bureau.
Convention Bureau? Other than them, there was no other space allocated. So no matter what, if you add, if you add additional occupants to the building, you're adding square footage, so the cost of the building will go up, right? For whatever, for whatever you add to it, it's going to go up. Any of the locations, except the auditorium potentially, reusing the auditorium, could increase, could go vertical. You're already going to have an elevator in there, so you could go vertical with additional square footage, it's just a question of if you want to pay more money for that building for, for a potential tenant, unless, unless it's somebody you know that you're going to lock in for some period of time that's going to help cover that cost.
Didn't we account for some of that square footage already? I think that's what Audrey's asking.
For those three entities, we did.
Yes, so they've been accounted in this.
They're accounted in there.
They're accounted in this.
Okay.
Presentation.
Might have been my misunderstanding, but they're, they're in the square footage right now, and they're in the cost as well.
Okay, thank you very much. The second thing is, it's pretty hard to compare them because they aren't doing the same thing. Option four is taking into consideration also the community center, you know, with that. So to, to, we're not talking apples to apples in my mind, because if we were talking one versus a solution to both, with that, so I don't know how you would, you could say that one is better than the other, because it still leaves us with, even if you chose block 50, for example, we still need to deal with auditorium and we still need to deal with the community center with that. So I, it's, it's not, to me...
Apples to apples.
Apples to apples. The other question I had is, we submitted a request for bonding for the community center. Is it at that location? How is that request, or is it?
Bond doesn't care where the location is.
It doesn't have to be there. So the city hall could be... So the City Hall could be at the old community center location, and if we got that money, the community center could be somewhere else? And when we...
You're not going to be through this process anyway when you find out about the bonding, because you're going to have a whole, you're going to have 10 months here prepping for what the building looks like and designing it. And the bonding question for this year will be done by May. So you're not even going to be half complete of even coming up with any design work whatsoever.
Well, the question for me is, can we afford to do, can we afford to do both of them? I still prefer the, the community center location. I think that's a good location for us, and I think we need to work to preserve the auditorium. So I think it's, that's, I think, we've got many different factors into making a decision. And, you know, if we're not going to know whether we have money for the community center, then can we afford to do the community center? When you look at the figures, I think that's a question that it comes back to, so.
Well, also, this is at an interest rate of 4%, and it does look like that, you know, even by the time you get into the bonding, hopefully in 2024, we'll see a decrease in interest rates for bonding and for... Tom, correct me, for every percent going down, what was the average decrease bond payment? Was it?
Like on option number four, if we go down to 3.5%, it goes, the number goes down to $880,000 of an increase in levy, so savings of about $90,000. On option three, it goes down to 4.39, so about $60,000. On option two, about the same. So yeah, it'd be a significant increase on a half percent saving, a half percent interest rate reduction. But that's, that's just assuming interest rates to go down, so that's not guaranteed either.
No, it's not guaranteed, but...
Michael?
Yeah, option four, you talked about possibility of increasing the square footage to make it probably what they need. So if we don't do the City Hall out there, will we be just doing the repairs that are listed?
We did look at that at one point in time. You need to reskin that building entirely. The report from 2016 identified it, and we saw it as well. So you're ba, basically taking a steel skeleton and almost redoing it. So the question is, and it doesn't have the areas. So you could, but you've got to realize 90% of the cost you're going to have in redoing that building as it is.
Right.
And if you go to reuse it and remodel it, I hate to say it, the seniors that use it, the community center, the community individuals that use it now will not have that building for that duration of construction remodeling period. That's the only downfall to that. You could do it. It's, the frame is there, and it's a steel frame, it's, it's pretty solid.
That's one of the discussions we had the other day, was the steel girders or framing, they're in good shape?
Yeah, the question came up then on auditorium, and again, we looked at the 2016 report and everything we saw, it looks fine. The only time you really have a deterioration of your structural elements is if the roof goes for any long duration of time without repair, disrepair. And you get leaks in, and you get, you know, things that start to deteriorate, rust, some of the steel. Most buildings, we talk about a 25 to 50-year life cycle on some of these buildings, they're going to outlast us, most of them. Steel's going to stay there forever.
Yeah.
Until it's taken down.
You also mentioned a possibility of recycling some of that as well?
Well, there's a lot of value in steel.
Right.
So I kind of believe that there's some contractor or somebody that if the city were saying, you know, we're giving, matter of fact, we did a fire station for just west of the cities where a contractor came out and there was a metal building out there, they took it away. So it's, it's definitely a reusable.
That's a possibility, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and when it comes to the, so, so what we came back with is what we thought you all wanted from our last discussion, because we showed the idea of a development on Block 50, and that was not met favorably, so we kind of came back with what we thought you all were looking for, for City Hall options. We also heard that you wanted to look at this community center site with the idea of the City Hall. When I, when I look at those other sites, you know, you could, on this block, on Block 50, you could theoretically get, you know, a, a, a community center on there, but you wouldn't have any parking left. So again, that, you know, we looked at a whole variety of sites previously, and when you talk about apples to apples, you know, you could put the community center there, but you basically take out all parking and make it very difficult to use a site. Same thing with the option of tearing down the auditorium. I don't think you have a, oh, no, that's, that's not the one, that's not the one I was looking at. This one, or actually, this one, I should say, if you tore down the auditorium, built the new City Hall, there's really not enough room, even on the existing property that exists, to build a community center over there anyway. So it's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison. We did it way back when, when we looked at a whole series of options. And then this circled back to the City Hall, and then we, we looked at the community center. Could you do, you know, this site, you know, I think the discussion was that if you're going to do a City Hall, it, it wants to have some prominence off 71. I mean, you want people to see it, you want people to know where your City Hall is, you want it to be a, you know, a piece of the community and an important vibrant piece of the community. So putting it on the north side, so it faced 71, seemed to be an important factor if you're going to do it out there.
So we have $2 million from local option sales tax for the community center. Is that enough to remodel that or not?
No.
No. So I feel like, I mean, I like the price for option two a lot, but I feel like in the long run, it might be better to do them combined and put our $2 million from tax on that, otherwise if we have to wait and build a new center sometime, it's going to cost way more, you know? That's my thought.
The average inflation cost for construction, it, we hit a, I mean, there was a big spike that happened during, during 2020. I think there were some construction trades that said it was as much as almost 20% spike that we saw. Now, part of that was material shortage and whatnot. We're seeing it level out to what it was historically, about 4.5 or 4%. So assuming we stay at that 4.5 per year rate, you would almost have to look at this roughly $9 million, $8 to $9 million community center, 10 with all the contingencies in it, and say, okay, each year that we wait, we're adding $400,000 or so of cost to wait. So you've got to remember, it will cost more in the future.
Julie?
So how do we see going about the process of making this decision? What, what's the, what's the process going to be?
Well, I think that the council has to probably sit down and just go through the pros and cons yourself and see what you think is going to be the beneficial in the long run. This is a long-term plan. This is not, this should not be thought of as a 10 or 20-year plan, this should be thought of as a 50 to 100-year plan. And, you know, you've got to think about, what does that look like? You know, taking a building that's already how old and then redesigning that? And yes, at, you know, of course, at some point in time, you have to say, well, all right, we got to set the auditorium to the side, and what's the, is the major benefit here to the City Hall and for the community center? Is that more of a major benefit? And then continue working on the auditorium in the future. Now, we're, you know, we certainly are going to be continuing, looking for probably ways of helping to red, you know, revive the auditorium or something, if, if we come up with an idea of what other use it can have. But besides, you know, we know the one for sure. Veterans Memorial has always been on the plate, but we also have to have some money to go along with to retro, to fix the issues that we know are there. And, and some of those grants that are coming available will be coming up here this spring again. They're a cyclo thing, so we'll be looking at probably applying for more money, see if we can get some money out of federal government and such to do that, you know, and continue also may, continue talking to our legislators about funding somehow for the auditorium too. You know, that, those conversations have really never taken place with our legislators, but...
Are we considering anything for public input? I know we've, we, before, when we had the City Hall Task Force, was that four years ago?
Five.
We had a meeting at the fire department, and people had sticky notes and put their, their preferences on the, on the boards. I think we had, I don't know, 25 to 50 people, not a huge amount, when you think of the, that percentage of people than representing 20,000 in the city of what they want. I know we've kicked around the idea of a survey, something going out to citizens. We also know that that doesn't have very good return. I'm just wondering, what have other communities done? I can't, I, I just think we need more information than the eight people at this table.
Mike?
I remember talking to the, to the, some of the seniors, and I know a lot of their, how do you want to say it, concerns was the traffic. Since then, we've discussed that, and we can control the speed of that traffic a little bit, we can slow it down. And I think that's probably needs to be brought out to the public, is that we can do that. So, because I have talked to quite a few, and I've been on vet time and stuff in that place, and, and that was a concern. They don't like going out on that fast traffic. So if we can concern, I think we need to get that out to the public.
It is. That is also part of our Safe Streets for All that we are in right now. So Highway 71 and 23, that section is part of our Safe Streets for All grant, so...
Yep.
That's all in the process right now of planning.
Audrey?
I'm glad to hear that, and I was just going to comment, we should do that now. We should do it now, because whatever we do is not going to happen for...
We have the Safe Streets for Grant right now, and that's what we're working on.
But we should, I think, I mean, that would be a step to, to do that, you know?
Certainly could.
I, you know, I've had people say, just make a decision, and I, clearly, you made the statement, this is for the next 50 to 100 years. If we don't have the right thing, then we need to figure out what is right. I personally would be okay with taking the auditorium off from the table. I, I don't see tearing it down, and I think we've heard enough that remodeling it is probably not a good idea, and that we move on to, to the other locations to look at that, with that. I don't know where the community center wants to be. I think that the drawings, et cetera, provide them with, would provide for that reassurance. And that's the other thing we can do, is just reassure them that no matter what we do, that we will find a place for them to function while we do this, and, you know, to work through that. I personally would like to see us also have tenants, if that is a possibility. I think that would be a great thing for both them and for us to have that. And, you know, I've already stated that I like that entrance to Wilmer kind of feeling with the corridor to Wilmer that's out there already, so those are some of my thoughts.
So the, I've always kind of been in favor of the, the Robins Island site as well, and the, the concerns of the speed on the highway and then displacing the seniors were my main drawbacks, and I like that you've addressed it. We can, we don't have to displace the seniors, they will have a, a spot there with, with this. And it also seems to me that we've, we've knocked significant amount of money off the price. Weren't we talking 35 million before for the combined site? And now we're down to 25, to 26. So I, I think we need to seriously look at combining City Hall and the community center there, and, and I, I would agree with Audrey that we don't necessarily need to continue to look at the auditorium. I think that maybe is something that was worth looking at, but, but is not something that maybe is feasible.
Audrey?
Thank you. With just one other thing, there were four of us that went to Columbia Heights to look at the new City Hall, and I thought we were going to be having a conversation back here at the table regarding that building, not necessarily, not necessarily how it's located in, inside of another building or the apartment complex, but the technology and the upgrades to that building take me back to, we need a new building for the future, we need a new building that young people want to work in. It was a great location, it had lots of, lots of meeting spaces, it had lots of open windows, it had lots of, lots of pluses to it, and a place that people, you know, want to work in with that. And that, to me, is something that if we're going to do it, then we need to do, to do it for the future and for the people who will be working in that facility for the next 10, 20, 30 years. And that's, I think, a challenge for us to be visionary, for what we need to provide for the future to be a good employer and to, just technology-wise with that, with that. And so I don't know if anybody else who went with that day has a comment about the facility itself, the, having a new facility, just curious.
And Councilman, I think all options except the option of reusing the auditorium could do that. Reusing the auditorium is going to be hard to get the light in some of that space to really the way you'd like it, but all the other options could, can provide that, that opportunity, those amenities.
Jess?
Thank you. I love the vision that we're talking about with combining with other organizations that so frequently are working with the staff, you know? Getting the staff of the city in the same building with the Chamber, with organizations like the EDC. I agree with Councilmember Nelson that we probably shouldn't limit ourselves to just those three that we're talking about, there could be more tenants that make sense to share that office space. I think when our staff gets to work to solve a problem for the residents of the city, they're working with these other organizations frequently, and to put them in the same building makes all the sense in the world to me. I love that. I'll follow up with some recent comments here made by colleagues that I think we can take the auditorium off the table. I don't, I don't see that being a feasible option. If I'm honest, I'm not excited about any of these options. You know, so I'll echo some of the process question from Councilmember Osmus. I'm, I'm interested in more public comment, and I'm interested in how do we entertain other possibilities? I don't think that the speed is the only issue with that location, the current community center. I don't, that's not the primary concern, I've heard from residents who have objected to that location. And I, I don't love the cost of that in any way. I think we can do the community center right without spending $9 million on it.
I don't know where, what we're looking for, Bruce.
Just information.
And then this was information, like Leslie says. I think, I think you do exactly what you do. I think you is, has, have a working session and talk about what those other options are that you're looking for, what, you might address what you're looking for. I'd be... Uh, I'd be glad to provide the councilmen with additional cholesterol community centers. Um, they will vary. The, the big thing they vary with is the amenities they have, cause some have more of an athletic bend and some like community center space, um, but we could provide you with what they're currently going for, cause it's, it's, the area that you have identified is very comparable for a new facility. Um, but I think it's just a matter of deciding. I, I agree. If you can knock the auditorium off, which I, I personally, and I'm not on the council, but I personally, you know, see some heartache with tearing down a historic building or the complexity of trying to remodel that and what you really get at the end of the day. Uh, there might be some state, some federal historic funds if you, if the city keeps it for some of that, um, mechanical roofing. The roofing would be the first thing I would address, but there might be some federal funds available for restoration. So I'd be glad to help wherever you can, but it sounds...
Thank you. Um, just a follow-up to Councilmember Oss's comments. Um, are you wanting to see other locations for the City Hall or other locations for the community center? Are you looking at, if we were to look out there, are you thinking they should be separate? Or I don't necessarily like the cost, but the cost isn't gonna be any less to build two facilities as one. So I'm just wanting a little more information regarding your comments.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I think yes to more information for both sites, um, possible locations around town. Um, I think there are some buildings that currently exist that could be remodeled to accommodate our needs pretty well. Um, and I know that doesn't, those would not be on current city-owned land.
Community Center or City Hall?
Both.
Both?
Both, either separate or together. And I think, you know, the cost of purchasing land, um, most certainly, uh, is a factor in this. I just don't see that as being anywhere close to like the $9 million. I think you can purchase an existing building, remodel it, you know, and, and have something far less than the price tag we're seeing for building new.
So if the community center wasn't out there, you don't believe City Hall, that's the right location for City Hall with tenants out by Robins Island on that same location?
Hmm. Maybe. How's that for clarity?
That's about where all, all of us are, so...
Yeah.
Well, I just got, Vicki?
Um, just a comment to Justin. I feel like if we use a building that's already there and we just remodel, that's what we've already done where we are now. And if we want the building here 50 years from now, you know, 75 years from now, it might be better to do new.
Um, just to respond, I think like we've looked at some, some buildings in some pretty heavy states of disrepair and our engineers have told us they will be here, you know, in 50, 100 years. Um, so I don't know. I guess that hasn't, I feel like you can do both.
Mike?
We just need to do something. We sat, we stalled and stalled and stalled in our roads and look where we're at. Look at, we're paying now. Let's not do the same thing. Let's get it done. Let's quit talking about it. Let's get it done.
Could always put a motion on the table. That's one option to, to get an opinion and see where you stand with some of these. Do even a straw poll, but however we can help. We can easily pull together the packet of information we've had in the past. We have all the other sites we've looked at around town. Um, there were a variety of those we looked at for community center. No, those were all brand new built. They weren't reused, but except for the JCPenney site.
All right, well, we'll have a knock down, drag out session here soon.
And if there's anything we can provide, please let us know. We'd be glad to help.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening, everybody. And if I don't talk to you, before that, have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. All right, next is, uh, EDC rebranding discussion. Aaron?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, excluding college, I have worked for 44 years, 33 of, uh, years of which in the field of economic development. My kids refer to me as a dinosaur, to which I say to them, I'm a happy dinosaur. I've learned a few things over the years. Remember your audience, customers come first, clarity of message. If you think about a brand name, it should communicate who we are and cultivate, cultivate a positive image. 20 years ago, uh, the Candy Ojai County and City of Wilmer Economic Development Commission, or EDC, uh, was established by the Minnesota Legislature under a joint powers authority. Our adopted mission statement, which has been in place for many years, is quote, "to be a catalyst for economic growth of the greater Candy Ojai County area," end quote. The EDC's mission statement has not inhibited me from working very closely with the City of Wilmer. The EDC, I believe, has been a good partner for the City of Wilmer. During my tenure over the last eight years, for instance, the EDC has played a significant role in six out of the top 10 construction projects in Wilmer that resulted in over 75 million in construction, 666,000 in permit fee revenues for the city and land sale proceeds deposited with the city. But things and names evolve over time and most economic development organizations use much shorter names for marketing purposes. As we went through this renaming process, there was strong consensus at the board level that a shorter name would serve us well. I should add that our existing nine-word name will remain as our legal name, so we don't have to go back to St. Paul, thank goodness. Names are important. They identify ourselves, who we are. A name change is not easy and we approached it carefully. In May, we sent out emails to city council members and township supervisors throughout Candy Ojai County. We wanted to know what they value in a new name for the EDC. It was pretty consistent throughout Greater Candy Ojai County that having the City of Wilmer specifically called out felt exclusive to the rest of the county. Each city and town plays a role in our collective success as a county and as a region. In June, the EDC invited community representatives from Greater Candy Ojai County and members of both our Joint Operations and Joint Powers Board, including members of the Wilmer City Council to participate in renaming, uh, renaming exercise with vantage point marketing. That provided us some potential names to consider and insights to how people felt. In August, questionnaires were sent to various stakeholders, the City of Wilmer, Wilmer Area Community Foundation, UCAP, Candy Ojai County, MMDC, Midwest Campus, Wilmer Area CVB, local business owners, Elevate Participants, et cetera. We were getting input as to what people considered important in a new name. On September 5th, the EDC's Marketing Committee completed work on our targeted audiences coming up with several names, with the top name being Candy Ojai County Economic Development, or KCED. In October, the EDC's Joint Operations Board unanimously approved the new name. Subsequently, the EDC's Joint Powers Board authorized a survey of all our standing committee members. That's 55 people, 60% of whom work in Wilmer, by the way. We had a great response rate, over 70%. The choice was overwhelmingly in favor of Candy Ojai County Economic Development. And a, and at a special meeting of the Joint Powers Board on November 20th, the commissioners unanimously approved the name, which we would like to incorporate into our new website in January of 2024. Both Sarah and I have regularly met with regional and national developers and site selectors. We have a pretty good track record. We have a pretty good idea of what they want and what they are looking for. This name change actually provides clarity for both those groups that Wilmer is part of Candy Ojai County. I believe it sets us up for future success. Under the Joint Powers Agreement, the Joint Powers Board decides or sets policy, adopts and revises our budget, approves loans to businesses, and hires people like me. The county commission and city council doesn't hire EDC staff, Joint Powers does. I appreciate your input and I would welcome your questions, um, and, um, would entertain any questions that you might have or need in information. Thank you.
Council?
I, I'll go ahead if you let...
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I had a conversation with you and, and truthfully, I'm disappointed. Um, I think that, uh, I would agree with the West Central Tribune about dropping our name. And, and some of the reasons that I feel, um, I know that one of the choices that you looked at was Candy Ojai Wilmer EDC. Um, I talked to you also, we talked about when you look at a map, what do you see? You see Wilmer. You see, um, if you wanna know what county Wilmer is in, there's some homework to do. You have to look and it's in Candy Ojai County. You know that I'm also been a strong believer. I greatly support your work and appreciate all the things that you do for our area. And I also feel that Candy Ojai County is better because of Wilmer and Wilmer is better because of Candy Ojai County. And we need to work together. I appreciate that. However, just losing our name in that when it goes back to, and I've asked this question, do we need to have our own EDA? Spicer has one, London has one, Atwater has something with that. Whether it's north, south, east, or west, you know, no, everything shouldn't be in Wilmer. However, Wilmer is a regional center and I think that it probably deserves in this situation to still be included in the name. And so from that standpoint, I'm disappointed and, um, I would request that you consider putting the name back in for it to be Candy Ojai Wilmer EDC. And I'm also aware you're, you're gonna have to put the legal name on all the documents and so it's somewhere on there. Um, with that, I saw a little version, cause I had asked for your documentation where it said Candy Ojai County and then Wilmer was inserted in the top and, um, I am concerned about it. Maybe not so, you know, I know your work, um, but what happens five years from now? What happens 10 years from now? Um, I believe you work hard for all of the communities, um, with that. That has nothing to do with it. It's an identity and for me, um, I'd request that Wilmer stay in there. I don't think one more, when people have long lost names, they don't just change them because they're hard to spell. You, you work with it. And I think Candy Ojai Wilmer EDC is something that's totally workable and that would be my request.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Audrey. I didn't know anything was happening and then someone gave me a message that we changed our name. So how much money does Wilmer provide to your budget? Quite a bit, isn't it? It's over half?
Um, approximately 85% of the revenues, uh, that are received by the EDC come from the property tax levy that is, uh, provided by the county. Obviously, a significant portion of the property tax is generated by the City of Wilmer.
Okay. We had this discussion, I don't know, 15 years ago, the commissioners and city council met at the fire station and I made the comment to one of the commissioners then, I said, "As Wilmer goes, so does the county." It's not, as the county goes, so goes Wilmer. We're the driving force here, I believe. So I was disappointed in the name change and just because a moderator couldn't say the name at a discussion that you were at, county commissioner says they gotta change the name. It's too hard to pronounce. That makes no sense, so...
Justin?
I'm just wondering what the process is here. Is this something that needs the approval of the city council? Is, is this just purely informational?
Um, if I might, uh, this is intended to be informational. Obviously, uh, changes, as I think, uh, would, would require a action on the part of the Joint Oper, uh, Joint Powers Board itself, so...
Aaron, can you explain how the Joint Powers Board came to be and where that authority came from?
Uh, sure. In 2003, summer of 2003, uh, there was, uh, legislation passed by the Minnesota Legislature that established the Joint Powers...
And why did legislators have to pass it?
Why? Uh, because there would be action, uh, related to the two bodies.
Wasn't it because counties don't have the authority for EDAs and the authority comes for cities?
Well, there are counties that have, um, established, uh, EDAs or just, uh, you know, economic development organizations per se. Uh, but here, what's unique is having the, the, the joint power.
Right.
Yep.
But I believe in the legislators, it says that it's the authority of the 469 state statute, which is the authority for the cities to have EDAs. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
Right. So, um, obviously, as I mentioned before, the legal name of the organization doesn't change. What we're talking about is marketing, the brand from a marketing standpoint. Um, and so we would utilize that as we have, um, you know, we would continue to be working with everybody.
Julie?
When we first started discussing this on the Joint Powers Board, I was, I was pretty adamant that it should be Wilmer Area, um, again, just for that regional recognition. If somebody, I had even was quoted in the paper as saying, if somebody's looking for, for this area, if you say Candy Ojai, they're not gonna know the difference between Kucha Ching, Kanabik, or Candy Ojai. Where are those counties? Um, but, again, after getting more information and discussing it with, um, other people, I understand the inclusiveness of the other communities and I still think we will be recognized and found. I think, um, part of it, I think, just then goes down to whether you wanna call it ego or, um, I don't know. It's, we're still Candy Ojai County and as far as you, you know, what, if you doing your job in Wilmer or around in the county, I don't, I don't see that as a factor where somebody had made the comment that, well, then you're not gonna do anything in Wilmer. That's not gonna happen. Businesses are still gonna look for the demographics in our area. They will find us. Wilmer is still in the address. When they go to Candy Ojai County Economic Development, it's in Wilmer, Minnesota. Um, I, I think, I don't, I don't feel strongly, as strongly as I did before, that Wilmer has to be in there. We are Candy Ojai County Economic Development. That's what you do. Um, and as far as, you know, I get the point as far as what Rick was saying is, you know, how much do we put in? Well, if 85% comes from, um, tax base, 50% of that is Wilmer. So 40 to 45%, 40, um, comes from Wilmer. That isn't, you know, we're not putting in 75 to 80% that it should be Wilmer Area. We're still less than 50% of, of the money that goes into, to support Economic Development Commission. I don't think it's that big of a factor.
Michael?
When I was stationed here back in, uh, 1988, I was not stationed in Candy Ojai County. I was stationed in... I was stationed in Wilmer, Minnesota. All of our stations for the job where I was working was by city, not by county. Candy Ojai County was my boundary, but it was not my station. So I had no idea where Candy Ojai County was, but I did know where Wilmer was, and that's why I chose it.
If I might, you know, when we're talking with people from outside the area, usually they're talking about West Central Minnesota, how many hours are you from the Twin Cities, things like that. They can talk about Wilmar, they can talk about Candy Ojai, but we know they're from outside. I think it's possible to communicate with people, especially digitally these days, around the world, and they can find us.
So, being on the Joint Powers Board, I know that you did a very thorough job of finding out what people thought about the name change, and I felt like Julie did at first, until I saw the poll that you took. And everyone picked Candy Ojai. They didn't have Wilmer in the name, they didn't pick that one. And I think a lot of those, what'd you say it was, 55 people?
Yeah. And, you know, for example, on the Finance Committee, most of those are folks that work in Wilmer.
Yep.
And they were very strongly Candy Ojai County Economic Development, even though their institutions are in Wilmer.
Yeah, that was the point I was going to make, was that a lot of those people live in Wilmer, and they still chose the other, the name without Wilmer, so... And I feel like, you know, we pick citizens to be on these committees and help with things, and for us to just come and say, "No, we want to vote ourself. We don't like what they picked." I have a hard time with that.
Doug?
Oh, Audrey.
I'm not going to change my mind. I think Wilmer belongs in there. Whether, I'm not going to be here forever, you're not going to be here forever, how we market ourselves. I participate in state activities, both with the league and the coalition. I've said that to you before. People ask questions, you look at maps, you know where major cities are with that. Most of our bankers that are probably on the Finance Committee have locations both in Wilmer and also in other communities. I can understand that, too, with that. My concern is just going forward, our identity. Do we need to look at going back to having our own economic development, some, something the same way that Spicer does? Do we need to worry about us? I'm not worried about you not doing that, but the future, two years, five years, et cetera, the name says something. Wilmer being left out of it, I have a real, I have a hard time with that. I think, I think we're equals at the table when it comes to almost population, when it comes to the amount that we contribute. I just think we need to be there, and I'm prepared, at our next meeting, to ask for a motion to have your consideration with that.
If I might, I don't think Spicer is necessarily the perfect comparison. Spicer does not have a full-time individual that's employed. Our organization encompasses a number of staff people. Typically, when you see smaller communities of, say, under 5,000, you don't see professional staff, because they don't necessarily have the funds to be able to have that and the costs associated with that. When it starts getting over 5,000, then you start seeing organizations, cities, counties, having full-time staff. So, I'm not sure, in terms of that comparison, that I see it the same way.
If I may just clarify, I'm not talking about full-time staff. I'm not talking about leaving EDC, but Spicer worries about Spicer, New London worries about New London. They, and whether, whether it's a volunteer thing or whatever, all I'm concerned about is if we feel, if we feel in the future that we have to do something like that ourselves, then do we have to disassociate because of the joint, the way this was set up? Or, you know, how do we get our name recognition back in? How do we get Wilmer back in?
I'll just say, like, I'm interested in those questions that Councilmember Nelson just asked. I'm interested in the question of what is the role of the city council regarding the name change? Is this something that Legal can look at before our next council meeting? Have they looked at this already?
No, they have not looked at it. But like I said, the legislators did do this as a joint powers, City of Wilmer, Candy Ojai County, joint powers. I think personally, too, without the name Wilmer in the title, it doesn't show that it's a joint powers board, or joint powers action. That's, the authority became because, under the state statutes, economic development is a city function, a city tool. I don't think, you know, a county would have had to go strictly to the legislators on their own to get that authority, and the city and the county decided to go together, and the names should stay together. That's, but, we can have the legal look at it, but that's, that's the way the state statutes is.
And then, Erin, when you were floating, I mean, your group worked on this for a while, it sounds like, and, you know, what other names were given as options in this survey?
The six names were Prosper Candy Ojai County, Prosper Economic Development, Candy Ojai County Economic Development, Candy Ojai Wilmer Development, Wilmer Candy Ojai County Development, and Candy Ojai County Wilmer Development. Those were the six names. By far, the most, and we asked for ranking of first and second choices. The first choice was Candy Ojai County Economic Development. The second choice was Prosper Candy Ojai County.
And it seems like, you, we ended up keeping the more difficult name to pronounce, in my opinion. I still struggle to spell it correctly. I've learned a couple tricks. Any consideration along the way for something like the Wilmer Lakes area, or West Central Economic Development, anything like that, that eliminated...
There was a discussion on exactly those, and those were discarded, and I think they, I think that they came back to these.
And does your memory serve you to know why they were discarded, or at what point those were discarded?
Well, in terms of West Central Minnesota, I think that they wanted something a little bit more specific to our, our area here.
Okay. And that happened at the feedback level, that happened at Joint Powers, or, okay. Okay, but you were saying, was I right earlier, that that often is, like, when you're talking with someone who's coming in from national, you know, they're asking about West Central?
Well, they're, they are asking a variety of questions, and they may be looking at, you know, how close are you to St. Cloud, or Minneapolis? How close are you to the airport? I had one where, can I get to the airport in under two hours? Maybe, depending on how fast you're driving.
Yeah. I do think, like, Councilmember Ossman's made the comment about it being a matter of ego, and, I mean, it's always hard to say that it's not, but I feel like it's not. I mean, I do feel like what our administrator's been telling us is that there's a special role that Wilmer plays in the EDC, in its founding, and in its current reality today, and I'll echo Councilmembers Nelson's concerns about the future, too. And in no way does it reflect, you know, how great I feel about you and the work of your staff.
Tom?
You kind of hit my point, so I'm good.
Okay, Rick?
So with all the work you've done for us in the last two years, when did you find time to think of changing a name?
Well, what I would say, Councilmember Fagerly, this has been an ongoing issue for years. We frequently have people call, and, you know, we're trying to explain the full name, and by the time you're done with it, they've already forgotten what you, you know, you were starting out with. So this is not a new topic. It's been ongoing for years. And so, as we're looking at a new website, as we're looking at other things, it seemed to be apropos to consider that, to make that change. And so, it's, it's not intended to undermine, or diminish, or to be critical. It's meant to, can we get our message out? Can we be as effective as we can be in terms of, you know, be successful going forward?
I am good with the conversation. I think we had a request to have our city attorney review it. Can that, can we just make sure that that's going to be done, and that we can get a response that may be our next agenda?
As far as authority?
Probably a couple weeks.
A review of the documentation, and whether, yeah, that can happen, so...
Yep.
We've got a lot of heads nodding. All right, Erin?
All right. Thank you.
Keep up the good work, all right? Next is Kyle Broadband.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me one moment to get set up here. Maybe Councilmember Ryan, if you want to start this one off?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to welcome Dave Sisser and Larry Fujin for being here, that they have a part of our committee, that Ben and I are part of our committee for over a year. City of Wilmer has been exploring an open access fiber project for the entire community. A fiber project like this creates the foundation for internet accessibility, fosters innovation, economic growth, and improves the quality of life for residents. Over the last 12-plus months, the broadband committee has diligently worked with Hometown Fiber to vet projects and provide recommendations to the city council. In the future, the committee hopes to make a recommendation of approval for a fiber project from the city council. Tonight, the committee will provide an update on what has been accomplished over the last several months. In addition to the staff, again, I'd like to introduce Dave Sisser and Larry Fujin. They have been with us from, since we started, so just thank you for that. And I introduce our city operations director, Kyle Box, who's been part of this as well since beginning.
Thank you, Councilmember. Dave or Larry, do you want to say a few words before we get started on your time, or do you want to wait, or give you the full recap? How's that? Quick.
Dave Sisser, I'm on Candy Ojai County Economic Development Broadband Committee, and I was asked to join the City of Wilmer, and had a great opportunity, great people, and I think we've got a great project going after. Candy Ojai County, what we've done on the broadband committee is, we went out and researched grants. We're getting grant funding. We have a huge project going on in the northwest part of the county. That grant funding's coming in, Candy Ojai County supplementing money to Federated Telephone Company, along with grant money, to provide fiber service to those residents. Once that's all done, Federated will own the whole system. So, a lot of grant money's there. But, that's really the only model outstate rural area that's going to work, because nobody is going to be able to afford, to put the system in and all by itself. The reason you can't access any money, grant funds, is because the City of Wilmer is considered served. And the grant funding from the federal, from BEAD, is usually unserved or underserved. That's the speed of the internet. 15.3 is the minimum, it's going to go to 120. So, as I've been on both committees, I caught eye to this open access about five years ago, I was reading some of the different magazines, and a great one that I follow is Broadband Communities. Good articles in there, good website, lot of good articles on what you are proposing to do, City Open Access Fiber. Fiber is the best technology that you want to go with. It is the fastest upload and download speeds, which was what you're going to need. It's scalable, it accommodates a low-end user, a high-end user. You can do that with fiber. You're going to be limited by the other technologies. Copper is going to be dead. coax cable has a limit to the speeds that you can. Fiber does not. Long-term infrastructure, it's like, when you get a fiber network, it's like the highways, it's like the electrical poles. The infrastructure's there. Now, what rides on that is what's going to make this fiber network unique. What rides on it is going to be internet service, but more importantly, what those internet service providers are going to do to enhance the internet service. That's the biggest key right there. In the county's situation, Federated Telephone, we got one provider. What services they offer over that fiber is what's going to determine how well that is going to work for the customers. What you're looking at doing here with an open access fiber is, we're going to have multiple vendors. If one comes in and wants to put in a smart city, smart streetlights, video cameras, offer this security. There's one that's offering social media services for all the kids in town. It's a platform that rides on a network. That network is the cities, the streets, the electric poles, it's the fiber in the ground. Without that, none of this can work. That's why I like the fiber. Adaptable, once fiber's in the ground, technology changes, you take that little box at the end of it, throw it away, go buy a new one, double, triple your speed. But you've got to have the fiber in the ground to do that. And reliable, longevity of what a fiber's going to run is going to be like the highways in the cities. It's going to run for a long time. Open access network is not new. It's been done, and it's gaining more momentum around the nation. Hasn't been done much in Minnesota. There is one, one community, and escapes my mind, has an open access fiber. I think it's the best way with open access, you're going to have a competitive, because we're going to have multiple ISPs on it. It's going to be, once you have competition, that drives down your price, and it's going to drive them to provide the backbone, the services, which is what's going to sell this to the community. Without a fiber and, or without a good fiber network, your communities, we're going to be falling behind. You need this to grow. We have to have, we have to have sustainable fiber for now and the future. One interesting thing in the magazine here was about Paul Bunyan out of Bemidji, Minnesota. Paul Bunyan's an independent telephone company. They've been very aggressive many, many years ago, because my wife's parents live up there. They built the fiber community. They're calling it now Gig Zone. That's their word. Everybody's calling it a gig zone. When they built that, this year, they hosted the nation's largest gaming convention in Bemidji because of the infrastructure. That's amazing. That's what you can do with an open access fiber. Thank you.
You have a technical aspect, attitude, or the presentation, bring back a little rattling? All right, well, thank you. So jumping right into it, Dave hit on a lot of these. What is the community benefit of having an open access fiber network? It's ISP choice. We, a customer wouldn't be limited to just one ISP, one internet service provider. They'd have multiple to choose from. We have a list of providers that we've been in contact with over this process that are waiting and waiting for us to move forward, to start this, ready to sign on. Amazingly fast speed, almost unlimited. We're starting to plan to offer, Hometown Fiber would plan to offer minimum speeds...
plan to offer, Hometown Fiber would plan to offer minimum speeds of 300 up, 300 down, all the way up to a gigabit up, gigabit down, and beyond. As technology develops and speeds increase, a lot of these Dave hit on. Reliable service that works all the time, no upgrading, or easy upgrading, no disruptions. It's replacing just the end piece of equipment. Remote learning, benefits to having it, remote learning, remote healthcare, remote work. We're bringing people into our community to take advantage of these things and overall improved quality of life. So on the municipal side, we have the benefit of addressing a few areas as well. We actually, earlier this year, we took advantage of entering into a contract with a provider here in town because our, our buildings were not connected. We couldn't talk to each other over our own network. So that's something that Jonah Johnson worked on earlier this year, to be able to do that. And this is just a reliable backup to that is to connect all of our buildings, connect our infrastructure. And being able to do that on our, on our own private fiber just adds redundancy and, and gives us the opportunity to expand to other institutions such as schools or healthcare and the like, where those, where those other anchor institutions, whatever, where they'd be identified. So those, those are some of the benefits. Now, we've brought some items back and forth to council over the last year, and I really just want to give you a, a timeline, just a recap of what you've, what you've seen in the past, what you've been asked to add, and what we're proposing to do in the next few months here. So all the way back to September of 2022, that's when we received our first proposal from Hometown Fiber. We received three proposals in total. And if you remember, the council members, we initially were just asking for a fiber buildout of the industrial park. We received three proposals, and every single one of them were different, and not one of them just was related to the industrial park. Each one of the proposals saw a greater need for our community. The standout proposal to the broadband committee was from Hometown Fiber. Their proposal suggested bringing fiber to every resident and business in Willmar. No other proposal suggested that. The proposal was received when the broadband projects, this proposal was received when other projects throughout the county, as Dave alluded to, were affluent throughout the county, and really struck a chord with the members of the committee to be able to provide this service, access to fiber to everyone in Willmar. The committee sought more data before bringing a vetted recommendation to council, and in December of 2022, the council approved a mapping project with Hometown Fiber to take inventory and map every parcel in Willmar. So what was presented to the committee was a rating system for each parcel. Yellow, which is the vast majority of Willmar, over 7,000 parcels, is meeting, currently meeting demands and expected to maintain that demand for the next three to five years. This is your copper coax cables. The green, there's a few of them. There's 14 parcels. That's pond fiber. Its technical term is pond fiber, but it is fiber. Remember how to define that. But it's, it's fiber that's shared by multiple areas, multiple areas basically from the curb. It's fiber to the curb and then coax to the property or to the, to the business or whatever it would be. That's anticipated to be good for the next 10 years. You've got fiber infrastructure already there. It's cable or coax to the building from the fiber. Blue, there's 23 parcels in blue. Those are parcels currently receiving fiber. If you look in the northeast corner of the map, that's really Mindot, the school, the new event center. Those have fiber coming into their, to their parcels already. And then there's a few on the south side scattered throughout the community as well. Like we had addressed earlier, Dave had addressed earlier, this fiber is going to be here for a while. We're anticipating fiber to be good for 20-plus years. And in the red, this was two parcels that we own, the city owns, both the airport and the utilities. The utility does have a connection through our municipal utilities, but are to be on our network to be, it wasn't being served. And so that was something that we addressed earlier this year. We contracted with a private company to get fire, and under contract for the next three years to have fiber brought to those facilities so we can talk to our own buildings. And really, that was done throughout the entire community. So continuing with our timeline, February of this year, we brought the official proposal from the broadband committee to the city council was we would like to continue and in further vet and further research this project with Hometown Fiber. Service contracts, broadband consultants, Laura Lewis, if you remember, a financial advisor, was brought on all in March. We were starting to assemble our super team, if you will. We wanted to make sure if we were going to bring a project to, to the city council, if we were going to bring a project to Willmar, we wanted to make sure that we had people that had done this before and knew what the ins and outs and what steps to take. So that's why, again, in May, Gilmore Bell Disclosure Council, this was a disclosure council in the Utah area that has done projects like this before. July consulting services, this was Roger Timmerman from, he was the, he's the CEO or executive director of Utopia. This was the, one of the, kind of the pioneers for open access fiber networks. Right away, for, this was approved by the city council for a one-time fee of $5,000 for his consulting services. I would say he saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars just for our short amount of time with him, just on his expertise on how to look at contracts, on how to look at network, network design, all in conjunction with Hometown Fiber. A lot of these, these steps are necessary and have been beneficial for our committee and for this project, giving us really a, a good view and good expect, knowing to us what to set our expectations as. And then as we work in the background, it's not us just waiting with Hometown, it's working back and forth. It's, it's what needs to be done in the background. So there's surveying, marketing that we've been working on, contract agreements that have been drafted and are reviewed by our city attorney, network design by Hometown Fiber, construction documents that will be designed by Bolton and Mink. And probably one of the most important pieces, financing. How do we pay for a project like this? This was estimated, this is estimated between 20 and 25 million dollars. If you remember, a few months ago, a couple of months ago, the council did a reimbursement resolution for bond council to basically reimburse ourselves for any, from bond proceeds for any costs associated with the city. These are necessary steps. They're not committing the city to anything, but they're necessary steps to take, setting ourselves up for, for the future, for success. So diving a little bit more into financing, what we're proposing is a little bit different than what was initially proposed to the council and to the committee, and we'll get into that. So what we're proposing is a general obligation, GO, tax abatement bond. General obligation bonds are really the city's bread and butter. This is how we finance road construction projects. It's, the process is very similar to how we just had our last improvement, or, excuse me, improvement hearings and setting the bond that way, or bond sales. Excuse me, not improvement hearings, that's road construction, but the bond sales of that. So the project estimate is just a little over, right now, is a little over 21 million, so 22 million dollars. And what we're proposing is a phased approach. This is in part, largely is mitigating risk. The construction, the original construction proposal is in six different phases of the, of the city. The city's essentially, it's in six phases, but the mapping is five different sectors of the city with the six phase being an overall kind of cleanup phase. The initial proposal was to bond for the full amount in 2024 or at the beginning of construction, and that money would be used over time when we get to construction phases two, three, four, five, and six. One of the concerns that we had, or just risk mitigation, is what if we had three separate bond issuances over the next three years if we're anticipating two construction, two phases to be constructed in each year? Again, this is purely for risk mitigation. If, if the worst happens and the project fails, the city would not be liable for the full amount, the 22 million. That's the approach that we're kind of taking here. It's not to that, we're suggesting that the project will fail or we don't believe in it, but it's just trying to offset the liability or the obligation that the city would have with a project like this. So in a, for the repayment, how this bond would be structured for repayment is typically in the Hometown Fiber model, the ISPs keep a percentage of what they charge for internet services each month. The remaining percentage would then be shared by Hometown Fiber and the city. This scenario is adjusted for each, for each project to ensure that there's financial sustainability. Unique revenue sharing model is a different contrast to what we would see from maybe current cable franchise agreements with cities, where franchise agreement revenue is based on a percentage of a provider's cable TV revenues only, whereas internet and telephone service revenues, those are excluded. They're not included in our cable franchise agreements. And as streaming TV has become more popular, households drop traditional cable TV services, and city revenues from cable franchise agreements drop as well, leaving communities wonder how to pay for these public access channels, council chamber technology upgrades, or other services. So the model that's, like I had said, that's being approached right now is a cost share between any of the internet service providers, Hometown Fiber for their maintenance of the network and their managing of the network, and then a cost, a portion to the city for So next steps, we're anticipating a survey, or we're planning for a survey launch at the end of this week, December. That survey will be in circulation for approximately four weeks. We'll be collecting data, kind of launching a market, market campaign, and giving, getting feedback from the community. What does, what do residents want to see? What do businesses want to see? Do we have support for a project like this? Ongoing work that's being completed is completion of the network design that is still ongoing, completion of construction documents. And then anticipated steps in 2024 is bonding or would be bonding and construction of phase one and phase two. And I should have added in phase, during the construction of, of how that's broken out. I know I spoke quickly over that. But phase one and phase two, phase one is, is all encompassing the industrial park. That's where this project had really was conceptualized, and, and that's kind of where we think that we can have the most cost, we can have the most cash flow in those areas. We're not, we're maybe able to charge a little bit higher of a service charge or monthly fee for your industrial, your commercial users than you would pay at a residential, at a residential rate. So it's, it's strategically laid out in phases, and we've moved those phases around to accommodate for that. So these are really the immediate next steps that we would take in this project. And then finally, I just want to leave you, since survey work would be the next piece coming, what we're anticipating is, again, I would, like I mentioned, December 15th, the survey and webpage, survey site and the webpage would go live, giving the community its first real look into what an open access fiber network is and how it can impact you as an internet user. Surveys will be live for four weeks. Results will be collected and presented for a February work session for us to review as, as a group together. We want to continue the conversation. This is probably one of the, we've addressed this at the council level maybe a few times, never really in-depth because it's really been phased and, and you're seeing it in pieces. I think we're getting to a point now where the council really needs to be brought up to speed. You need to see it from the high level, give that, get that high-level overview, and so we're able to kind of deep dive into different pockets as we, as we move forward with the project. So that's where we are to date. I know we talked about a lot. We were, we stayed really high, but if there are any questions or any specific questions on anything we talked about, I would be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Carl. Carl?
The surveys, that's on the city website, and people just, information will be out there on how to access that survey.
Yep. So the QR code, so that what you're seeing now is postcards. So we are proposing to send out postcards to every resident and business in town. We did get quotes from four different providers and local providers to get that done. Relatively pleased with the cost for, for those postcards to go out. There's a QR code. There is a URL that will be on those postcards. These will also be shared on social media, and then they'll be placed flyers throughout the community as well.
I have a, just a question about, so we're successful and we get this done. What's the city's responsibility on a day-to-day basis if this is up and running? Who bills what and how does?
It's a, it's a great question. So the day-to-day responsibility, well, I'll preface with this, that's a great question, and it's still being discussed. But the, the, and we're anticipating what that would look like is the day-to-day operation. If you have got an issue with your internet, you are going to call your provider. You're not going to call the city. And they're the ones that are going to still be able to help you out the best. If your provider isn't going to be able to help you out, that's what we're paying, that's what we would be paying Hometown Fiber for. Really, the city is the conduit for, for funding and, and ownership of the network. So any long-term upgrades or any long-term, big maintenance items that would need to be done, that would be on the city. But when it comes to day-to-day, day-to-day operations, maintenance and management of the network, that is, would still be the responsibility of the ISPs and Hometown Fiber.
I think when we were in the budgeting process, we had talked about a position.
Yes, I did. I forgot to answer that question. Thank you. In the 2024 budget, we do have, and you'll have to forgive me on the percentage, but we do have a part-time for 2024 position, a utility billing clerk. The city would be responsible for the billing, or we are proposing to be responsible for the billing for the broadband, for internet, for these, for customers. Essentially, how that would work is that we get a list from ISPs sent to Hometown. Hometown sends us a fiber, here's who you bill at this amount, at this address, and we would send out the bill and collect the funds. The reason that we want to do that is because we would like to be in control of the dollars at every, at every stage. It's not us waiting on ISPs to send us our portion of the money. It's not us waiting on Hometown Fiber to send us our portion of the revenue. We would like to be in control of that and, and disperse that accordingly.
Is that, do you see that, that, that's feasible, that, that's a one person? I just see a billing department taking off somewhere, and I'm, was concerned about that.
Right now, we're proposing it to be one full-time position. That's what we're anticipating at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Anything else?
I think invite Larry up here to recap any of my rambling here.
I'm Larry Fujian. I've been in town for 30-plus years, and I don't have the technical background that Dave does. However, I, I was a computer repairman in the Army, and I've been involved in computers my whole life. And my first internet connection was dial-up to home when Ross Bennett first started offering it, early 90s. Every job I've ever had involved computers, and most of the time I was ultimately responsible for the information systems. I do recognize strongly the need for information, and the need for information and an efficient information system is important for all businesses from an economic development standpoint and for the people that are going to come to work for those businesses. You know, the amount of usage that we're getting today was totally unforeseen 20 years ago, and we probably can't predict what it's going to be like 20 years from now. Whatever we put together is going to have to be upgradable. This system that's being proposed from all aspects certainly looks to me like it's going to be very upgradable, and, and Dave touched on that. The city's done well, you know, attracting new businesses, but the state of, but state-of-the-art communication is going to continue to be necessary to attract those businesses, attract those people to town. And if we can be on the leading edge of that, we can have, we might not be, I read in the paper not too long ago that we were going to have the best internet in the state. Well, that might be pushing it just a little bit, but we ought to be on the leading edge, and we need to be competitive. If we don't do something, it's not going to be very long down the road, maybe a year or two, before the rest of the county's going to have a better speed on their internet than we do because they'll have fiber and we'll still be trying to push everything across a cable, coaxial cable. Broadband is infrastructure to the same extent that water and sewer and streets are. It's absolutely necessary for a city nowadays. This option does, because it's open access, provide us ISP choices and should provide competitive pricing services. It should be upgradable as the need arises, and it should be upgradable by areas. Let's say one area of the town's going to need faster internet because there's more businesses there and their upload-download speeds have to be more, and they, you could upgrade one area at a time. Is that correct?
You'd be able to, because it's going to be a direct fiber to the homes.
Right. And And so it should give us a, give the city a competitive edge, you know, in, in the recruitment, at, at least for a time. I've been, you know, there's obviously risk involved in everything, and that's been my biggest concern with this whole thing, is the risk to the city, the risk to the taxpayers. I've been super impressed with the quality of the staff in the city and the work that they've done between them and their consultants, and doing the technology research that's necessary, searching out, inventing vendors, market analysis, financial analysis, legal review. They have satisfied me at least that they have done the necessary work. Is this no risk? Probably not. But it amazes me that we should be able to get this done and pay for it and pay for the bonds through revenues over time. I am particularly interested in the, in the marketing analysis and, and those kinds of things because obviously, the money that's available, our one-third, is depending on the amount of money that we've got coming in. How many customers do we have? So far, everything we've looked at says that that should work. The, the phasing of the financing and the phasing of the construction does help mitigate that risk to a great extent. Because if you start to run into issues, you're going to discover that in the first phases. And so in my own estimation, I do strongly support this process, this project. And I would encourage you to give it every consideration it deserves. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
All right, Rob, last item, Invest in Wilmer contingency funds.
Thank you, Mayor, member of the councils. I'll go through the summary of your packet that we have of the Invest in Wilmer projects that we've completed. We have four projects that we will talk briefly about here. We'll start with the Robins Island project, that project is closed out. The total project was $3 million. The total cost of the project was $2,658,204.47. So the remaining funds that we have in that budget is $341,795.53. The one thing about with Robins Island, when we talk about with the bill, we can transfer 10% over, so we're over that. So we have $41,000 and some change that we can keep at the Robins Island project, or we bring it back to the debt service. Okay? And so when we look at the items that we completed, we completed the parking lot, trails, the water main project, the shelter improvements, the Gurry, the Hilltop Shelter, and Shelter One and Number Two. So basically, everything that the subcommittee looked at, we completed. There are some items that we looked at as far as staff went, that we could look at with that $41,000. There would be some pavement improvements at the Gurry Shelter, pavement of the driveway at the Hilltop Shelter, and additional trail, trail pavement. When we get to the Recreation Field project, that one is still considered open with the Swanson Field one as well. That one got kind of slipped through the cracks with Finance Director Okins leaving, and when we were reconciling all the invoices and everything, and then when Finance Director Odens came on, we just need to officially close that project out. But it's, everything is done with that project as well. So the Recreation Field project was a $6 million project. The total cross, cost of that project was $5,715,196.13. So with that, we have a remaining balance of $284,803.87. So items that were completed in that were the two artificial turf fields, the four baseball softball fields, the concession stand, batting cages, lighting on the turf fields, and the fencing around the turf fields. Items that were not completed in, in that project was inflatable dome, the lobby slash restroom facility, and the parking lot. Some of the items that we see after being there for a while, especially on the softball side, would be the shade structures that would be able to go over the dugouts, or, and then the protective netting that would go over the complex, especially where the backstops are at, because of the foul balls, because it's such a tight area that we probably need to look at some sort of protective netting to go around that area. So now we'll move to Swanson Fields. That was a $2 million project, the cost of that project was $1,965,571.40. The remaining balance of that project is $34,420.60. If we remember correctly, that contingency fund was reduced from the original amount of 10% to 3%, so we can be able to get the Blue Field into the scope of work. Other things that we did with that was the playground was installed with CIP funding. The lights for Elsie Clemson Field was, and the red and yellow field were also with the capital improvement projects. The brown shed refabrication, the redoing of the bathrooms was done through the park and rec operational budget. And the burn project was donated by the Wilmer Baseball Association, and the labor was provided by the public work staff. And items that were not completed was field drainage improvements for red, yellow, and green. And the Plaza Shelter slash restroom were also not completed. The Events and Recreation Center is a closed project, that project was a $10 million project. The total cost of that project was $9,02,291.50. So the remaining balance in that budget is $987,708.50. We need to realize too that that budget was at nine, nine and a half million dollars, so we still have a $500, I would say, seed money that was left of the 10 million to be part of that nine, 900,000. So items completed in that were the pickleball courts, the basketball hoops in courts, volleyball, tennis, bleachers, scoreboard, sound system, kitchen area, indoor playground, community room, two multipurpose rooms, the dressing rooms, restrooms, bathroom, shower area, courtyard area, and the expanded lobby. Items that was not completed was the outdoor covered ice rink, the locker room addition, and the seating for concerts and shows. So looking at some of the projects that were not completed, we got some estimated project costs to finish those projects. If we look at Robins Island, to do the additional pavement and trails, it would be between 80 and $110,000. If we look at the Recreation Fields, the inflatable dome with the grade beam, and that grade beam, so everyone understands what the grade beam is, is that's the concrete footing that goes around the dome, and that has different variations to it, if you have a flush, or a six-inch, or a 12-inch curb, that, how it attaches to. And when we went and looked at domes, everyone says that you should do a 12-inch curb or grade beam, because when you have the snow falling off, you want to be able to take your bucket and go right up against that curb and get the snow away from it. So, so when we're looking at the dome price, and that's with the grade beam, it's going to be anything between 2.4 and 2.9 million dollars. Okay? And that does not include any of the site work, the lobby area, or the parking lot. The protective main for the softball and baseball complex, it's going to be between 75 and $100,000 to put that up. When we look at it amongst the staff, we feel like we can do that ourselves, where we don't have to have the big engineered poles and footings and everything. We feel like we can design our own cabling system to put the netting up and get our, like, basically build it ourselves. We feel like we can do that at the fraction of a cost. The shade structures, if you look at that we're at Swanson, that's black poles with the metal roof on it. A set of those is 35 to 45,000 dollars. And then if we do shade structures, those are going to be 18 to 20,000 dollars per unit. If we look at some of the drainage for the softball fields for red, yellow, and green, we're looking between 80, 80 to $100,000 to accomplish that. When we look at the Event Center, the outdoor cover rink slash pavilion's going to be 1.4 to 1.6 to put hockey boards in there, installed would be about $230,000, and the locker room addition would be about 2 to 2.5 million dollars. And so in your packet too, there's just the breakdown on it on Excel sheet that you'll be able to see as well. And then some of the things that, when the, the group went out talking about Invest in Wilmer and the projects, all the information that they went out with their flyers. So, so there's money left over, there's roughly about, I would say, if, if we take the $41,000 or dish shy of 1.6 million dollars of unspent dollars that can be used for, for projects. Well, the only one that is, is a big question mark is going to be Robins Island with the $41,000. If it stays with Robins Island and we complete other portions of trails or pathways there, then the 10% would be able to be played where it can all get moved over to a project to itself.
How do we decide this?
This is a council decision on what project we make.
Audrey?
Thank you. So just a couple of comments, like at Robins Island, why do we not have a bathroom in Gurry? And isn't that something that we could do with this money? I've been a supporter of keeping the money with the projects to make sure that we aren't back at the table next year looking at, at things and a CIP that could have been done through our local option sales tax. And that would be a request that I would have is to, to go back and look at each project. And I did talk to Mary Swatsky and just asked her where they were at with their project, and she had made the comment that they wanted to get through the first year to see what, any things that needed to be tweaked, et cetera. And that same conversation with if there's local option sales tax money, why would you ask staff to do it? I, I realize there's a difference in, in how you have to bid it and those types of things, but we have the opportunity to do those. I'd be supportive of the shade structures at the softball fields, they're important if you go to any tournaments, those types of things. And so I think we have an opportunity with each project to make sure we've got things the way they are. And I would encourage us to go back and to do that before we look at anything else. If we end, end up having funds left over after that point, I think our community center is probably deserving of anything versus any additional projects, because there were all things that were cut out of all projects in the, in that process. And so just curious with how we can, how we can go back and ask those questions with what else can be do to make sure that each place is safe? I think that Gurry Shelter, the bathroom, is a safety issue for people, if you're renting it. I'm not suggesting it's open to the public, but it's an excellent place for, you know, a restroom. If you've got kids that are going down to the playground, and now they have to use the restroom, and they have to cross the road and go down the hill to get to the other location, I think we could enhance, we could do better. I think, and I think it's a safety issue too, so.
I can look into the Gurry bathroom. I believe the reason why the bathrooms were taken out of there is because of the sewer line was demolished, and it just stayed at the Four Seasons Shelter.
But there is money, I mean, what would it cost to do that?
I can get you a number.
But I think just fundamentally, each project, if there's some tweaking that can be done, how long before you're back asking for something else in your budget? That's on some of the things that you talked about. So I think we have the opportunity to make it better and, and spend the money the way it was designed to do, so.
Vicki?
I was on the Events Center Committee, and I would love to see the outdoor ice rink get done. And I'm wondering, if we don't dip into the other funds and we use the 978,000, can we have, like, citizens collect money, do fundraisers for the rest of it, or?
Of course, they can always donate too.
Yeah, or donate, yeah, something like that, just so we can get it done. Because I feel like there would be people that would maybe do that, and there might even be people who would help to put it together, you know?
Any else? All right, was this just a review and?
Just to give you an update where we're at dollar-wise and what's the council's wishes of how we want to do with the dollars.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Rob? If not, thank you, Rob. Do you have anything else to come before us tonight? All right, I have motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We are adjourned.